Welcome to the Callexico City Council, Callexico Redevelopment, Susessor Agency, Callexico Financing Authority Planning Commission Special Meeting. Meeting is now in session. Call to order at 6:08 PM. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Present.
Mayor Potemle Gaspie.
Present.
Councilmember Tylinda.
Here.
Councilmember Marcus is absent. Councilmember Calderon?
Present.
We have call.
Okay, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, closed session announcements?
We have no reportable items from closed session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, we move on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
One second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Potemle Gaspie.
Yes.
Councilmember Tylinda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus is absent. Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, we move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve? Or do we have any public comment on the consent agenda? No public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve consent?
I'll make the motion.
A second. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Potemle Gaspie.
Yes.
Councilmember Tylinda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus is absent. Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, discussion and potential action items. Do we have a comment on any of the discussion items?
We do not.
Okay. Did you say we do or we don't?
We don't.
Oh, I understood we do. Okay, do you have a motion to approve? Would the council like to discuss anything? Well, actually, I'm sorry. Let me start on item number five. Approval of a side letter to the Certified Operators SEIU Local 221 Memorandum of Understanding for the period of July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, and retroactive to July 1st, 2002 to address and ensure compliance with internal audit findings identified by the Calpers Office of Audit Services. Do any council members? Do we have a presentation or any discussion on that?
Yes, that would be for me.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we are requesting item number... Both items on the discussion agenda are for the same purpose. We are requesting council approval of two side letters to current MOUs. Those two MOUs are CMEA, which is the Callexico Municipal Employees Association, and then the other one is SEIU, which is the Water Waste Water Certified Operators, for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and retroactive to July 1st, 2002. And this is solely to address compliance issues that were identified as part of the Calpers audit. And just to give you a little bit of background, the Calpers audit, it goes back months. I have been working on it. There was a lot of findings. They started the audit sometime last year, and they issued a report to the city, and they determined that there was all these different items that needed to be corrected or addressed, all these findings. And throughout, you know, since I've started, I've been working on correcting some items. Some have already been corrected, but it's an ongoing thing. So this is just another step closer to resolving the audit and finalizing it. We still have some items left, but we're closer to the end than to the beginning. So they broke down the... All the findings were broken down into three observations. Observation 1, 2, and 3. Observation 2 has been resolved and is closed. These two side letters deal with or address observations, a combination of Observation 1 and 3. So just to give you a little bit of explanation of what Observations 1 and 3 are. Observation 1 is the current MOUs don't include language from previous MOUs. So some employees are getting... Are receiving a grandfather benefit from back in 2002. And the current MOU, instead of stating what the benefit is, it just says... It kind of... It references an older MOU, but it doesn't state, you know, it doesn't break down what the benefit is. So when Calpers did the audit, they said, "No, your current MOU has to state what that benefit is." So then, this side... Part of the side letter, what it's doing, it's adding that language to the current MOU, which is pretty much the benefit is, back in the day, back in 2002 and prior, their employees are getting education incentive for units. So if they had 30 units, they got 2.5% of base pay. If they had 60 units, they got 5%. If they had 90 units, they got 7.5%. So that's no longer an existing benefit. Right now, you have to have either an associate's or bachelor's to get either 5 or 10%. And that's the only thing that is stated on the current MOU. But they want us to also list the previous benefits. So the side letter is adding that language to the current MOU, and that addresses Observation number 1. Observation number 3 is that the current MOU does not specify what goes into the calculation of the education incentive. Our system right now is calculating, is adding... So it's taking your base pay and then also adding the incentive of shift differential. So then, the current MOU reads that it's only base pay. So they wanted us to make that correction so that our system and the way that it's been calculating and the way that it's been reported to Calpers matches what the MOU reads. So then, this side letter also adds that language, where it's base pay and shift differential. So those are... Those two observations. One of the first item, which I believe is SEIU, right? Yes, SEIU. That one has... That one needs... Or I guess that one, the findings for that is... Addresses Observation 1 and 3. CMEA, it's only Observation 3. So that's pretty much it. This is a requirement for us to be able to get closer to closing those two observations. So by approving that side letter, which did go to the bargaining units, and there have been discussions with them throughout the process to inform them, you know, this is coming, this is why, this is why it needs to get done. Calpers is... They're really on us to get this completed. So... Because it's been going on for a year, if not more. So they've been aware, you know, the whole process... Throughout the process, they've been aware that this is coming. So they got the side letter, they signed it. It's signed by at least two of the... We still have one more that we need to bring to council, which is the POA. But at least these two, you know, they're in agreement, they signed it, and this is... Once it's signed by... Approved by council and signed by mayor and city manager, then it's going to be sent to Calpers so that they can close those two items. And if anybody has any questions?
I do. And obviously, if it's not signed, we're going to be fined about $16,000 a month?
Yes. Well, it's... They wanted to see, from the last time that I brought items, which was back in April, was when I brought like three different items, and there's been some adjustments that they have requested from finance. They wanted to see some progress. So they gave us a July 31st deadline, which is tomorrow. So that's why we had to do the special meeting today, so that we have enough time to be able to ask city clerk to generate a minute order, and I can send it to Calpers, and then Calpers will... At least we're satisfying some of those requirements. It's not where we're going to complete the audit, but they're seeing progress. And this way, it avoids... Because what... Since it's been going on for so long, they're already kind of... I don't want to say threatened, but kind of, with a penalty. Like, if you don't... If we don't see any progression, if we don't see anything, if you just ignore it, sit on it, we're going to start fining you a $16,000 fee per month. So we want to avoid that. So this is, you know, kind of...
I do have a... This was an HR matter, right? Prior to your arrival?
Yes, but when I got here, huh?
And it became your matter?
It became mine because we didn't have an HR department, so I've been working on it since I first got here.
So this was under your other duties as a sign, so I want to say thank you for working on it and getting it done.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
It's hard, especially if it's not under your department or something that you do often. And so, it's been... It was more than a year, right? From my understanding, it was over a year that it was sitting in the HR.
When I met with them, the first time, they said that they'd been... They had been... So what I think happened was that they did the audit, and then in June, they issued the report. Once they issued the report, it was... We have all these observations, you need to fix them. And I think that's when they started getting no response from the city. Because whenever they... We have meetings, and they... This has been a year, it's going to be a year, it's going to be... They always go back to June of 2024.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that's when they just start getting responses, and nobody was working on it, and they say they were being ignored.
Oh, wow. Okay, well, thank you.
I want to say, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you, Carla, for an outstanding job and for answering the phone calls from Calpers. That's what it took, right? We needed to answer those phone calls.
Emails, they were trying to get ahold of someone.
Responding to emails, answering phone calls? Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Calderon, do you have any comment or questions?
Carla, thank you.
Thank you. I do believe that Calpers will work with us. When I first got in in January, they emailed me, and they asked me for help, because they told me, "Hey, we've been trying to get ahold of everyone we can, and nobody responds." So I forwarded that to Chief Contreras, and then that's kind of where it started going. So I'm sure they'll work with us. And I also want to thank you, because I know this wasn't your responsibility, but you took it on, and you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve item number five?
Motion to approve.
Second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Potemle Gaspie.
Yes.
Councilmember Tylinda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus is absent. Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Item number six. Approval of a side letter to the Callexico Municipal Employees Association, CMEA, Memorandum of Understanding for the period of July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, and retroactive to July 1st, 2002 to address and ensure compliance with an internal audit finding identified by the Calpers Office of Audit Services. Do we have any public comment for item number six? Okay, and it's the same, right?
Yeah, this is the same item, just different bargaining unit.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Any motion to approve?
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Potemle Gaspie.
Yes.
Councilmember Tylinda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus is absent. Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we move on to the public hearing. Item number seven. Public hearing to consider conditional use permit modification and density bonus for the Holly's Affordable Housing Project. I'd like to open the public hearing at 6:21 PM. Is there a presentation from staff?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. This is a re-noticed public hearing that was tabled from the July 16th, 2025 public hearing two weeks ago. Just to recap, Berverwalk LP, the owner of the property for the Holly's Affordable Housing Development, is proposing to add a new section to the middle portion of the property. I'll firstly describe the current on-the-ground conditions. The Holly's Hotel consists of two separate wings, a southern wing and a northern wing. And then the middle portion, which has been demoed, that middle portion is what's proposed for nine new units, an office, and a community room to serve existing residents, and also a mechanical room. In the northern wing, they're proposing to convert the mechanical room, which will be replaced within that central portion, into an additional unit for a total of 10 new units. All units would be affordable to very low-income households, and it is grant-funded. There is an expenditure deadline of April 30th, 2026. So Mr. Robyn, who is the owner of the development, is... Has a very aggressive timeline for construction of the project. We still haven't issued the building permit, because we're waiting for approval from council, but essentially, there's nine more months left in order to get the central portion built. It is grant-funded. We are not a co-applicant for this grant. It's for 2.3 million dollars. It's a competitive grant that they were able to obtain with assistance from the County of Imperial, and it's from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. It is staff recommendation to approve the project. We did provide additional supplemental information that was requested at the previous hearing, including pro forma, and also a breakdown of impact fees, and also an incident log for the past three years, provided by the fire department.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the applicant is present tonight to answer any questions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Yes, does the council have any questions for Mr. Coyne?
Yeah, I do. And also a comment. Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Can you explain a little bit about the state density bonus law?
Yeah, so affordable housing projects are allowed, especially this one. It's based on a table that's established through state density bonus law. They're allowed to... Affordable housing projects, depending on the level of affordability and the percentage of affordable units, they're allowed to get what are called waivers and concessions. Waivers are of development standards. For example, the most typical one being parking and setbacks and height. This particular project being a 100% affordable housing development for very low-income households is pretty much eligible for any waiver. And they've requested a waiver from our parking standards and from... And also from the EV requirement, because it would make the project financially infeasible.
I had the pleasure this morning of meeting Ms. Joanna from the... From the project area. I think she's a site supervisor, and she gave me a tour of... I'll call it Holly's. So Holly's, right. And we went... I got to see a couple of the units, nicely kept. I got to speak to a gentleman from one of the tenants, a very respectful gentleman who talked highly of the people around. Lot different from during my patrol days, where it wasn't smell... It wasn't smelling like urine or anything like that. I remember those upstairs hallways over there by the parking lot, so I was impressed, talking, looking, and I saw what I liked, so...
Thank you.
That's my comment.
Councilmember Tylinda?
I just want to say, thank you, Michael, for putting this very detailed staff report of 187 pages with all the information that was requested additionally by council. So I don't have any questions. I have a lot of... I had a lot to review, so I appreciate that.
Okay, Councilmember Calderon?
Thank you, and good evening. Thank you for joining us today. I want to begin by saying that I fully support affordable housing, and I believe that all Callexicans deserve access to safe, dignified homes, especially of our most vulnerable population. But I cannot support this specific project, and I would like to share why. First, I am concerned about the long-term sustainability of this project. The city of Callexico is on collateral for 55 years and is not the owner of the said property. While the developer secured a 2.3 million dollars in a grant funding, I ask, what is going to happen when this funding dries up? The resolution does not have a clear plan for future operating expenses or even oversight from our city. Second, there is approximately three investors or developers involved in this construction of this project. If they were to defraud or walk away, what recourse does the city of Callexico have? We have seen in our city where developers have come in, overpromised, and underdelivered, and we're still dealing with these problems. We should be learning from the past mistakes, not repeating them. Lastly, Mr. Robyn, in our last meeting, sat here and made the comment that this type of project budget are designed to fail. He said it himself. So why should I agree on something that is bound to fail? And lastly, again, is I hope that the city council does not approve any type of these projects in the future. What we should be concentrating is allowing our director to do his job, our planning director, to do our job, to bring revenue to our city, which is in dire need. I have said it before, if we don't get any revenue by 2027, this city will go bankrupt. Again, we need paved streets, we need single-family homes, we need new businesses. We have been closing businesses here in Callexico. Rite Aid is one of them, the most recent one. So again, for these reasons, I respectfully vote no on this item.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Calderon. We were asking questions for staff. We'll go to our discussion portion after we close the hearing. So to continue to ask questions for staff. Mr. Coyne, so this is a project that you've already done your due diligence as the expert in development, I assume, and there are no issues, correct? issues, correct?
None that I'm aware of, that I've uncovered. As you see in the supplemental documents, all previous agreements are there, all recorded, they recorded covenant, and everything's detailed.
Okay, and then Chief Contreras, as a fire chief, you've seen, and one of the departments that approves permitting, do you see any issues with this development?
No issues, other than just obviously inspecting it once it's complete and making sure everything's up to compliance, that's pretty much on our end, which has been in the previous years, so just finishing the project and going forward with the inspection.
Okay, thank you. And then city manager in the absence of the police chief, are you aware that there is any issues with any high criminal activity or anything that would prevent the city from approving this permit?
I, I'm, no, Mayor, I don't, I'm not unaware of any issues at this time.
And then finance director, do you have any financial concerns about this project affecting the city in any way?
None.
Okay, thank you. So if we have any questions for staff, we would continue that. If not, after we close the public hearing, we can discuss it as a council. Any more questions for staff?
I do have questions, but I can wait.
But for staff?
Yeah, for staff.
Oh, then go ahead. Or wait, were you going to ask questions for staff? Oh, let's go in order, yes.
So, Mike, you showed me, obviously, patrolling the city for many years, there's a lot of homes out there that have sheds in the back of the residence that for the elderly's and, you know, they're renting out for low-income individuals, the amount for $500 or $600. I've seen a lot of that all over Colexico. And, I mean, it's affordable housing, we need, you showed me some pictures, you showed me a picture of a residence where there was, I don't know how many sheds in the backyard, and they were charging these elderly people $500, $600. And there are people out there that are looking for a place to stay, and that's something that we need to look out for, I believe. So that's the only comment that I have.
Councilmember Thailanda?
So, bear with me, okay? Let me go back to your staff report, I'm gonna read this, and we're gonna just go back and forth, because land use is my favorite, so. Staff recommendation, you did do your job, contrary to what's being set up here, so I think you did your job, I think you did it great. Your recommendation is to approve the proposed affordable housing project, and you include in the staff report that in order to disapprove of an affordable housing project, the city council would need to make written findings that, one, the project will have a specific adverse impact on public health or safety, and, two, there is no way to mitigate the adverse impact other than by disapproving the project. So, based on the required findings that you outline here specifically, is there any that we can't mitigate or that have been found?
No, it's a very narrow threshold, and perhaps the city attorney can elaborate, but it is very difficult for the city to deny an affordable housing project. There has to be a preponderance of evidence that there's an unmitigable impact on health and safety.
Correct, and that's not the case here, right?
No, because it's an existing affordable housing project, so it would be hard to make the case that there's a new unmitigable impact caused by the 10 additional units.
Correct. Other than feelings, right, but based on facts, one and two are out the window, that's why you're recommending it, correct?
Yes, honestly, I feel like even with the other council member Calderon's concerns, that we're really, we really don't have that much of an option, it's almost a courtesy and a procedural step that has to be taken by council.
These are very protected by Senate bills, legal factors, correct? Yeah, they're very protected, how would you say, population, I guess, if you want to say affordable housing, right? With that said, when we received money back in 2018, right, 2019, they got the home key grant?
It was the home key, back in 2020.
Oh, in 2020, and we were co-applicants, correct?
We were co-applicants.
So if the developer were to walk away from it, we are responsible for carrying it out, for continuing the operation, correct, is what my understanding is?
I've looked into that scenario, and it would actually be the owner that would be responsible. In speaking with HCD, they would try to work with us on finding financial sources in order to cover operation costs for the facility. So it is a public-private partnership with the owner and the applicant, but the responsibility, really, the, the...
Yeah, but in time of finding someone to come run it, we'd have to do that as a city.
We'd have to, it's a, it's a product of both the city and the developer, and we'd have to find a way to continue to operate the facility, working with the state on finding funding sources. But in looking at other developments that, you know, used home key funds, the, it was actually the state going after the developer of the project, not the jurisdiction that approved, that helped approve the project or was co-applicant for the home key funds.
Okay, and so here, just for reference, the additional 10 dwelling units are going to have a positive impact?
That should help with, of course, with very low-income projects, they normally operate at a negative revenue because it's, and they need this sort of financial subsidy from the state. But with the 10 additional units, it should help with the negative revenue not being so negative. It should help with, you know, bringing additional revenue so that the balance sheet isn't so imbalanced.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Calderon, do you have any additional questions or comments?
Can you tell us how much revenue this would bring us? Because I believe that it was just one time, it was $92,000, correct?
That would be a development impact fee for the total of $102,000.
Just one time?
It would be one-time revenue. Yes, sir.
And let me ask you the last question. If they were to foreclose, you say that it would be our responsibility to take care of it, correct? Or it would be, I couldn't, couldn't hear you when you were responding.
Yeah, so in that, I did pose that scenario to the state, to our representative, Brandy Stowe, from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And normally, they hold the actual owner of the facility accountable because the owner is the, is the one who ultimately received the funding. Even though we were co-applicant, it was, the grant was entirely passed through, we did not, we only dispersed the funding, we didn't actually, we don't have any financial stake in the project itself, we don't have any direct financial interest.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Would the applicant wish to speak? Okay, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. June Kim?
Good evening, and first of all, I was lucky, I was late, and I was lucky I can be able to...
Mr. Kim, can you pull down the mic so we can hear you? Thank you.
So, yeah, here, it's okay? Okay, I agree, in a way I agree with Mr. Calderon. And City of Colexico, we should do right project, supporting the right project, not shady, something questionable. County was funding a last, something fishes project when the resident was the supervisor. And I asked the, one of the supervisor, you know it's not right, why you guys accepting? And he said, they already been done, so if we don't approve it, county gonna get sued. So we twist the hand, support, support it. And I see same pictures right now. First of all, you all, you know, they didn't have a permission, permit to do it. And then they just, demolitions without any permit from the city. Why that happened? So now they saying, oh, if we don't approve it, we're gonna get problem. Then who's the problem? City, let city employees, let them to start it without any permission, any process? Or the project owner, they do themselves, they believe they have overpowered the city? Or city, some of the city council members, they're pre-approved behind the scene, and now we are, council members twisted their hands to approve it? If we don't, we're getting in trouble? Anything, we want to do something good, if we fail to follow the step of regulation, we causing problem ourselves. For example, one of the big issues on the halfstones, city didn't follow the step, let them have a favor, now we're all backfired to the citizens. I strongly recommend you, to see if you came to the legal issues, they should not approve it. For the, for the future of the process, if we approve it, same thing, it's gonna be future, anybody can do something about their own way, and then when they got cut, oh, I'm sorry, we got, we got ready, we're gonna do process later. They supposedly pay some consequences of what they done to the City of Colexico. What we making decision to proving, how proving, how we are approving, that's impacting of the city's future too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any further public comment?
No more comments.
Okay, so, being that there are no other public speakers, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing at 6:42 PM. Mayor Protem Legaspi, would you like to make a comment before any motion?
No.
Councilmember Thailanda?
So Director Coy, it's a misconception that I keep hearing, they, they had a permit for the demo, right, and the demo permit is not contingent upon the CUP issuance, and they even signed an at-risk. Can you talk about that, please?
Yeah, so, because it is grant-funded and the, and the timeline is, is so limited with the expenditure deadline of April, 2026, the applicant did decide to move forward with demolition of that central portion of the facility, but at-risk, filling out a form which essentially says, you can go ahead and move forward with the demolition, which would be allowed without, you know, council approval, that could be allowed outside of the scope of council authority under, you know, my purview as director, I could approve that, you know, say for a parking, additional parking area within the facility. So he did move forward with that at-risk, acknowledging that the building plans were contingent upon the approval of the conditional use permit modification.
Right, thank you, I have another question. So as council, acting in the capacity of planning commission, and when you have certain permit processing as this one, which is a conditional use permit, can you talk about what required findings are and what we as a city council slash planning commission are tasked to do in that aspect, and not so much worry about where are they going to get money to pay for it, because that's not part of the required findings? Could you discuss that?
Absolutely. So the findings are, the required findings are laid out in our municipal code, and those are included in the resolution, and essentially that the use is compatible with the surrounding uses, with the zone, and with the general plan.
Okay, and based on the required findings and your recommendation, would you say that we've met them?
Yes, the findings are, have been met, and those are in the resolution.
And that's why as our staff and our expert, Director of Planning and Building, you're recommending to approve it?
Yes, the conditional use permit findings for this use have been made, and they're before you for adoption, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Calderon?
Yes, the only comment I'd like to make is that, and for the record, that if we approve this today, we'll have others lined up for the same resolution. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first I want to address one of the comments that was made by the member of the public, because we do need to correct assumptions. There's an assumption that there was a need for a permit for the demolition at the last meeting, at the last hearing regarding this same subject. Public, I mean, the, the Director of Development told us that there is no such permit needed, correct? It was just a waiver that they get signed?
No, there is a permit that was required and submitted, but with an at-risk form that essentially says that the demolition doesn't guarantee approval of the units themselves.
Okay, so there was, nobody jumped the gun, nobody went ahead, nobody did something that they weren't supposed to do?
No, they, no, they went through the required process.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I just want to make a comment that when we became the planning commission, the whole intent of the council becoming the planning commission was to remove the red tape because our city is in dire need of development, and the whole purpose of us having an additional job to do was precisely to do that. When we have a project like this one, where pretty much there's legislation telling us what we have to do, it's a given, aside, I believe the only exception is if there are any issues with the project, which we've already been told by every department head here that there is no issue. So also the public hearings, we need to, we're here to listen to the neighbors, to see if they have a concern. I have not heard any neighbor, anybody in the surrounding area say that there's a concern. I did hear somebody last time, but that, you know, individual doesn't even live in Colexico, but anybody here within our city that might be affected by this project, nobody has expressed a concern. So we also, the city does not have an impact, the city will not be liable if anything happens, and it's not affecting our general fund. So I, I see absolutely no reason to not approve this project, this permit, unless, like what I just heard, unless we want to get sued, correct?
I would defer that to the city attorney.
If you wanted to deny the project, you would need to make those specific findings on the record with factual, because obviously, as you know, the state has adopted a lot of housing legislation, Housing Accountability Act, and then the AG as well has been monitoring that, and that's why you need to make specific findings if you want to do, if you want to deny it.
Okay, thank you.
So I do have, so in order to vote no, the required findings would have to support that, right?
We would, yeah, we'd probably then bring the item back with, with...
Right, but the required findings don't support that, right?
The findings that are before you now and the draft resolution wouldn't support it, not denial. We would have to come back and repost it, re-notice it in another public hearing.
Alrighty, thank you.
Okay, well, my motion is going to be to approve, and not because of the losses that I mentioned, but because it's the right thing to do. And so I motion to approve this, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez is absent. Councilmember Calderon?
No.
Motion passes.
You're welcome. Okay, so with nothing else on the agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Meeting adjourned, I'm sorry, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez is absent. Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at 6:49 PM.